Eric, I am muting you on purpose. We're gonna have you stay muted until you need to speak, okay?
Sounds good to me. Can you see me?
I can see, I can see your mute function, so.
Yeah, okay, I'm just a black screen, is that why?
Um, yeah.
I'm a, I'm a black screen here, I don't know if you can see me, my face or not.
I, I don't, I'm not sure, just, uh, hold on.
Don't worry about it, wait.
Okay. Tyler and Sam from TWG, I'm not showing audio enabled for you guys yet, you may need to select use internet audio or call in.
Andrew, are we ready to go? You're muted.
Yep, I am, I am ready to go if you are.
Okay, before we start, on my screen is the agenda, is that what everybody else is seeing?
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna call, when are you gonna switch us back where we can see each other?
I can do that right now.
Alright, then I'm gonna, after you do that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Okay, I see you. Give me a second here. Alright, I got everybody in front of me. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Uh, the next item here on the agenda is, uh, our city manager, Mike Hughes, would like to inform us or give us some information on this webinar, or on this cast. Michael, you there?
Yes, I'm here, thank you, your honor. I just wanted to say a few things. I'm about to virtual meeting for the public that may be watching. So the governor issued executive order 2020-15, which allows virtual meetings. Part of what's required is that the public be able to make comments. Uh, so we have the same agenda format, and we're gonna allow visitors to make comment. And Andrew Cook, our assistant city manager, he's gonna be describing how we go about that. Uh, so you can make public comment under the visitors portion of the agenda, and then also for each agenda item. Each time a participant speaks, they should announce themselves, and that includes, of course, commissioners, staff, and the public. Each vote that is taken by the commission, according to the executive order, is required to have a roll call vote, that's a little bit different. From what we normally do, there are certain votes that require a roll call, in the case of a virtual meeting. Um, every vote or action taken by the commission has to be done with a roll call vote, uh, so that the public knows how commissioners are voting. And then the last thing I'll mention is that one of the other requirements is that we offer closed caption, uh, captioning. And that's done through the YouTube stream, so if that's a service that you need to require, uh, that's available on the YouTube link that we're, uh, streaming the meeting. Uh, I should also mention that there is a likely delay, uh, between the YouTube stream and the Zoom stream. And just make sure that's known for those that are watching, uh, via each of the formats. And so, um, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, the next item is the pledge allegiance. So if we can do the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance, but of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Uh, the next item is our invocation, and I have asked Pastor, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Wiki, or to do that for us, Commissioner Wiki, would you please do our invocation?
Sure, let's pray. Dear God, we come to you today with Thanksgiving in our hearts, for our family, friends, and community. Lord, we pray that you would keep us from harm, and especially all those who work on the front lines every day. We ask that you'd give us peace in our minds and joy in our souls. God be with us tonight as we discuss issues pertaining to our community. We ask that you'd give us wisdom. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Uh, the next item is roll call, Mr. Rhodes, please.
Andrew, do you wanna unmute everyone?
I will do that.
Alright, Commissioner Mullins.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Burr.
Present.
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Wiki.
Here.
Commissioner Malone.
Here.
Commissioner Littman.
Here.
Commissioner Good.
Virtually present.
Vice Mayor DeVorec. Mayor Heil.
Here. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proclamations and presentations, there are none. But we will move to our visitors' comments. Andrew, uh, I'm gonna introduce you to do, to tell them what we need to do on the visitors' comments.
Okay, and I'm gonna mute everybody back again, so. Hold on just one second. There we go. Okay, so for visitor comments, um, anybody who is an attendee in the Zoom meeting, and it looks like we have five attendees. Um, you can, you can make, you can put yourself in line to make a comment by using the raise hand feature. Uh, for those of you who have logged in via computer, if you go to the bottom of your screen, a menu should pop up and give you the ability to raise your hand. Um, for those calling in on a phone, uh, you would type in or dial in star nine in order to virtually raise your hand. I'll be able to see those. They've raised their hand to make a public comment. Um, if we have multiple people, I will introduce your ID, whether that's your phone number. Or the name that, uh, you have logged in with, um, and then I will unmute you to allow you to make your public comment. Um, you should be acknowledging, get an acknowledgement on your computer or via phone that you've been unmuted. Um, and then you're free to go ahead and make your comment. Uh, those with a computer, I will note that when I tested this. A lot of times, even when I make you active, you're still muted and you'll need to unmute yourself on the screen. Uh, again, that's at the bottom in that context menu, so, uh, with that, I think we go ahead and open up for anybody who's interested in making public comment. Okay, we have one, and it's Steve Kara, and I am going to authorize him to make his public comment. Go ahead, Steve.
Alright, did that work?
Yep.
You, perfect. Yeah, so my name's Steve Kara, running for state representative, so, uh, present virtually as well, it'd be nice to be there in person to meet you all, but. I'm running for the Aaron Miller 59th District as a, as a Republican. Pro-life, pro-gun rights, support the president, wanna keep our money here in our community and in our pockets. Still sitting at two Detroit for government-run programs all the time, so, uh, worked the last three years for Steve Johnson, he sat right next to Aaron Miller on the House floor, so. Uh, was actually ranked the most conservative state representative, but I think more importantly, most principled. And so we'll be ready to hit the ground running, and, uh, looking forward to the opportunity to represent the community if, uh, so willing. And can you all see me, or is this just audio?
This is just audio, Steve.
Okay, well, that works, but, uh, but yeah, so I guess normally I'd say I'll be around afterward for, uh, questions, comments, to chat with people, but I guess that doesn't work tonight. But, uh, good being here with you all, and I guess I'll turn it back over to whoever's next.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Alright. Any more, Andrew?
Um, I do not see any more, I'm gonna give just a couple of seconds here to see if there's anybody who is following along on YouTube and maybe have a delay. Alright, seeing no other hands raised, I will, uh, say that there's no further public comment, mayor.
Alright, thank you, Andrew. Um, would you unmute everybody, please? Cause I'm gonna ask for approval of the agenda.
Okay. Well, are we gonna do that by roll call vote? Yep.
Yes. Well, we gotta first have a motion. We gotta take, I would take a motion to approve the agenda, please.
All moved.
Second. Second.
Motion to approve and roll call, please, Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeVorec, Mayor Heil.
Yes. Uh, the next item is the approval, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
I actually, Mr. Good. And I don't know who did the second.
Here.
Okay, uh, roll call, please, Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeVorec, Mayor Heil.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to move to the unfinished business. The first item is the PDD three, second reading, Andrew, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, uh, this is the second reading of the Plan Development District Three. Um, a plan development district has been requested at 200 East Chicago Road, the former Arkwrights property, and 111 North Monroe Street by TWG Development. Um, they're looking at combining those parcels and putting a, um, a new housing project, a four-story new construction building that would provide forty affordable housing units to ages fifty-five and older with retail space on the ground floor. Um, included in your packet was detailed drawings of, or schematics of it, as well as a site plan. Um, the PDD is a process that we use here at the city, uh, to encourage and promote high-quality development with an emphasis on extra, architecture, site design, and landscaping. Also provides us some flexibility for, uh, land uses that may not otherwise be allowed in the districts in which they are located. Uh, in this case, this is exactly such a project because of some of the height requirements and some of the use requirements, it would not normally be allowed in the district where it is located, which is. A split between, uh, Central Business District and Business Highway Two. Um. So the, the PDD is, is gonna be used in order to allow that, to allow the process to move forward. Um, in this case, uh, the PDD has been set up to, uh, create high-density apartments in the Central Business District. And provide a wide range of compatible uses for the non-apartment space. Um. Going forward, uh, we, this has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, as well as one reading at the Sturgis City Commission. Um, looking for, uh, consideration and approval of the second, uh, the second reading. Will note that when the, if the PDD is approved, it creates basically a special zoning district with, with new regulations, that information was also included in your packet. Um, that detail things like the height the building can be, again, the uses that it can be, things along those lines. We do have representatives of, uh, TWG joining us virtually here. Um, both Sam Rogers and Tyler Knox, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute them both if they wanna say something. Um, at least I'm gonna unmute Tyler, and Tyler, you can, you can also put your video on if you'd like, if not, that's perfectly understandable, too. I don't know if you have anything to add, uh, to the presentation, I know the one thing that we wanna talk about is a little bit about the veterans vouchers that, uh. Are gonna, gonna be part of this project now, too.
Yeah, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, a few weeks ago, at the beginning of March, we got approved for six HUD-based vouchers, uh, for veterans. Uh, which I think I talked about, a little bit about at our, the last city commission meeting, um, a few weeks ago, so basically what those vouchers will do. Uh, will designate six of our units, uh, as development to veterans. Um. Yeah, that's pretty, pretty much it, um, they're pretty general. Um, it, it's kind of, it helps make our application a little bit more competitive. Um, because we're having, um, additional, uh, an additional kind of requirement, um, for, uh, I think the application requires us to meet, um, about fifteen percent of the units. Um, to have some sort of voucher, um, vouchers associated with it, um, these vouchers are project-based, so they're not tenant-based. Um, so we will always have these six units, or the six vouchers available for those units, um, they don't travel from tenant to tenant. Um, so like if a tenant wanted to, um, leave our development in the future, um, they, they leave the voucher there, the voucher is always associated with, with our housing development. Um, I think as far as any, anything else, nothing's really changed on the development.
Okay. Okay, um, I think that's it, if there are any questions, uh, Mr. Mayor, turn it back over to you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Good, before I do that, I do have to note, recognize if there's anybody in our audience who has a question, I will take that comment now. And then I'll come back to the commissioners.
And I'll just, I'll just mention again, yep, I'll just mention again, it's the same procedure that we used for the, uh, the public comment, if you. Wanna make a comment on this, this agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature, once again, for those on the phone, that's star nine to raise your hand. And I'll just wait just a, a minute here to see if anybody raises their hand. I, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hand, Mr. Mayor, so I think we're, we're good to go on to commissioner questions.
Alright, thank you, Andrew. Uh, I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Good, he waved at me.
Commissioner Good, and I have a question for TWG, um, on the veteran vouchers. The, falling into the group of both the senior and the veteran, is the veteran voucher. Equal to, in regard to the income portion of the rental schedule? In other words, they're not given any additional consideration because of their veteran status?
No, so it's basically just, um, I mean, so the, the six units that these vouchers will cover, those units will be for veterans who, um. Also are seniors and also, um, have the same income requirements, um, that need, that need to be met, uh, for, for the entire development. Um, does that answer your question?
Yes, and there's a, an additional question, you know, along with that. You have six vouchers available for the project. Uh, if you fill the, um, apartments without any veterans present at the time, and then one comes in. Does that, uh, voucher then supplant a current resident?
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the, uh, because they're based on the project, I think six of those units will be reserved for the veterans. Um, so I think veterans have kind of a first-come, first-served, um, priority over those units.
So without a veteran present, you could be thirty-six occupied, six vacant.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty positive, um, Sam, if you wanna step in, um, I'm not that familiar with how vouchers work as far as from that standpoint. Um, so Sam, if you wanna step in on that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's a situation where if, where if, um, where the, where, where we can. We can't lease it to other people if they're not there, but then again, we also can't move anybody out, should, should a veteran show up, um. I would wanna use the project base, I mean, I mean, so what, what, what'll happen is that we will work very, very closely with the actual. A group that supplies us the vouchers in order to make sure that we fill those with the actual veterans. Um, there'll be, there'll be a lot of dialogue between, between our management team, as well as. As well as the providers to make sure that doesn't happen, if that makes sense.
Yeah, at the same, uh, go ahead.
Uh, I, I think it makes sense, it's not necessarily germane to the Plan Development District, but it was, uh, a question that I, regarding to the veteran vouchers.
Yes, so I've actually been speaking with the director for the St. Joseph County Veterans Affairs, uh. And he, he made it seem like there's, he jumped on this pretty quick, um, it seemed like there's quite, quite a need, uh, quite a need for this, so. I thi- I think we should be pretty, pretty good to fill these units out.
I'm not surprised Stoney jumped on that.
Yep, Stoney's who I was talking to.
Alright, is that it, Mr. Good?
That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thanks. Andrew, I can't switch to see the rest of the, some of the commissioners, if they're waving at me, can you unmute them to see if they have any, if someone else has a question, I cannot see everybody.
Sure, and I, I mean, we can also go if, if a commissioner has a question, they can unmute themselves and just announce themselves with a question.
Let's do it that way. Are there any other commissioners who have a comment or question for these two gentlemen or for Andrew?
Okay. Commissioner Littman.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lemon.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Is there a breakdown in the, uh, the apartment size, one bedroom, two bedroom, uh, how many there are, as far as the size?
Uh, like the square footage sizes?
Yes.
Yes, I think you, you guys should have that, um, I can pull it up here real quick. Um, but I think typically our one bedrooms are around seven hundred square feet, and our two bedrooms are around nine, between nine hundred, nine hundred fifties.
You have a count for those? Number, a number of them, the number?
Uh, yes, I do. So we currently have. So there are twelve one-bedroom units and twenty-eight two-bedroom units.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Littman, is there any other commissioners that have a comment or question for these gentlemen? Seeing none or hearing none, um, I will take a motion on this, uh, item.
Mr. Mayor. I'd move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the second reading of and approve a preliminary site for PDD three. And an amendment to the zoning ordinance, point zero five zero one. And adding section one point zero four one two point two, PDD three, Plan Development District, expected April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty.
Second that. I have a motion by Mr. Good and a second by Commissioner Klinger, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeVorec, Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, we will now move on to the next item on our agenda, zoning amendment, catering facilities, and banquet halls, this will be the second reading, is Will there, please?
I cannot, we can't hear you, Will.
How about now?
There you go.
Alright, thank you, guys. Alright, this is the second reading for zoning amendment to catering facilities and banquet halls in the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission made, made the recommendation to the City Commission at their December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, meeting. And at the March eleventh, we had the first reading at the City Commission. Uh, this amendment would allow banquet halls to be placed in the BOS and manufacturing zoning districts as a special land use. They are currently, uh, permitted use in the BH one and BH two zoning districts. Uh, this would also create a definition for catering facilities, is that it's not currently a permitted use. And it would make them a permitted use in BH two, BOS, and manufacturing. Would also make them a permitted use in BH one and the Central Business District, but in that case, they must be in combination with a banquet hall or a full-service eating and drinking establishment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have on this.
Okay, as I indicated before, Andrew, um, is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment or a question to Will?
Okay. Again, same procedure as before, use the raise hand function if you wanna make a comment on this agenda item, uh, these are members of the public. If you're telephone only, it is star nine to raise your hand. Wait just a second, I don't see any immediately, but I'll wait just a second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
I see no comments from the public.
Alright, thank you. Um, I did see Commissioner Good wave his hand at me, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I'll, uh, re-express my, uh. Thought that the catering facility should be allowed as a standalone, uh, business within the Central Business District. Um, however, I understand that, uh, uh. I was a sole no- I was a sole no vote the last time. At any rate, um, the banquet center that was on or is on, uh, South Centerville Road, uh, near the Armory. As Will, this question is for you. Has that been operating, um, outside the zoning rules? For the years that it's been in operation?
My understanding was it came in years ago as a non-conforming use. And it's just been operating as that since, since that came in.
So now they will become conforming?
They will be conforming and that currently that building is for sale. And that was where we received some phone calls and people wanting some zoning compliance letters written. If they were to continue using it as a banquet hall.
So that's what fired up this whole, uh?
This was, that was one of them, yes. And we had, the other part was someone had reached out about using another vacant building as a potential banquet hall and then maybe turning it into a catering facility at a future time. So.
Okay, thank you, Will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Thank you. Um, again, I, the only commissioner I can't see is Commissioner Mullins. I don't know if he's got a question or not, so I don't know if he has been waving to me or not. But I can see everybody else.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. I, I had it muted, so maybe that's the reason why. But my question is, I guess I do have a question now. Do we have a, uh, maybe it's for Andrew. Do we have a wavy thingy to tell him that we have questions or we just wave our hands?
Um, you should have, you should have the ability to raise hands. I'm not sure that the mayor can see it when you do. I, I would be able to see it and, um, announce myself. I think the best procedure is to just make sure you unmute your microphone and, and vocalize that you have a question if you're, if, if, uh, if you do have one.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So are there any other questions or comments for Will or on this, uh, issue in front of us? If not, I will accept a motion for this, uh, agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, I move the city, uh, the Sturgis City Commission consider this the second reading of and approve the amendment to this, uh, City of Sturgis zoning ordinance, section one point zero two zero two and one point zero four zero six through one point zero four one zero pertaining to catering facilities and banquet halls effective April seventeen, twenty twenty.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Mullins, a second by Commissioner Klinger. Roll call, please, Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Nay.
Vice Mayor DeVorek, Mayor Heil.
Yes. Uh, motion will carry.
Thank you.
Approved, I should say. Thank you all. The net, now we'll move to the new business section of our agenda. The first item on the, uh, that agenda is the COVID dash nineteen resolution. Uh, and again, I don't see Michael, Michael Hughes.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the commission is aware, we've taken a number of measures proactively in a response to COVID nineteen. Uh, we have additional measures that we're recommending that are, were included in a resolution in your packet, uh, so you've had a chance to review it. I'd like to go over really the primary measures that we're proposing. Uh, so number one, that, uh, City of Sturgis employees currently eligible for sick time be provided up to eighty additional hours of paid sick leave for an illness related to COVID nineteen. Uh, retroactively applied to March first, twenty twenty. And, uh, as the language suggests, we, our intention is to be in compliant, compliance with the family's first, uh, Coronavirus Response Act of twenty twenty. Now, I don't know how many of you ever reviewed that, but it addresses paid sick leave time for full-time and part-time employees and then also FMLA. Uh, so we'd like to move forward and, and, um, initiate this, but at the same time recognizes we're going to have to be in compliance with that federal act. Initially, when we reviewed it, uh, didn't appear that there was an implementation, uh, date, but we have further guidance. I think they believe it's April first. But we'd like to apply that retro to March first. So that's the, the first measure. The, uh, second measure would be for City of Sturgis' part-time employees with previously scheduled shifts that were not worked due to the shutdown or closure of so, city facilities to be paid for their scheduled and unworked shift hours for March twelfth through March fifteenth. And then their average number of hours over the previous two normal pay periods for time starting March sixteenth through April thirteenth. And then the final one, um, and we've temporarily, uh, postponed shut offs or disconnections, but we would like this officially approved and, and put some parameters around it uh, by the commission that all utility disconnections be suspended until May fifteenth, twenty twenty. And all utility late fees incurred from March thirteenth, twenty twenty through April thirteenth, twenty twenty be waived with normal fees for service continuing to be accrued. So at this time, I'd, uh, entertain any questions that you have.
Mr. Mayor? Can you hear me? Mayor Heil? Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I'm, I'm back.
Oh, there we are.
All right, any, Commissioner, has a question?
Yes, uh, you know.
Go ahead, Commissioner Good.
Uh, yes, as, uh, so often is a question at the, uh, federal level and state level. Do we have any idea what the, uh, monetary cost of all this is?
So, um, we could, I think we can give you a sense of what, um, waiving late fees might be for that period. And I think Holly could give you some insight on that.
And what about the pay for the part-timers, uh, that are not working their shifts?
Well, I think Holly tried to answer that. She was on mute.
Okay.
Eight thousand, zero, 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 eight thousand dollars, I think, on the late fee question.
Okay. Any idea on the, uh, pay for the part-times?
I, I don't have a.
Um, that'll take.
Yeah, okay, I get it. I just wondered.
Uh, Holly, is that eight thousand, the, between the time period that we have on this, on the agenda here, the dates? Or is that eight thousand a month?
It's about eight thousand dollars. It's about eight thousand, thousand dollars a month typically, the late fees. So we're waiving them for one month.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, any other questions? Please unmute yourself and speak out.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that, is that Mr. Commissioner Mullins?
It is, thank you. Hey, um, I'm just one question for, uh, Mike, if you can hear me right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, in order to receive the extra paid sick leave, does a employee need to be tested for the COVID nineteen and test positive?
No, they wouldn't be required to test positive. We have, we have situations where people are symptomatic, but they may not be entirely symptomatic to be able to receive the test. And we're still encouraging them to stay home. And so that's why, you know, that language does, um, related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So if someone is symptomatic or, um, staying home or isolating because they've been exposed, then they would be, um, eligible for the eighty additional hours. And I think part of our guidance, what could be what the, um, federal government is using and we're being mandated to use it any, but anyway, but I think they have some pretty decent, um, guidelines. They, they even include things like staying home, um, because you don't have access to childcare i- in other eligible items for receiving the sick time. Uh, and it, it actually extends to part-time employees as well. So in some sense, we're going to be required to do that anyway. Um, but I want to, I want to be aggressive with that because I don't want a situation where employees, because they don't have sick time, um, and, and at the same time have symptoms or, um, feeling pressured to come back to work.
Well, that leads me to the, into the second question, if I might. Um, we're talking about employees on furlough versus being laid off. Do we have any employees at the city that are laid off or is everybody pretty much on a furlough? I mean.
Well, at this point, part-time employees are, are not on furlough and that's the question before you. So they've just been called off from work.
Right.
So I imagine, um, yeah, so if, if they're not getting paid by us, they're probably seeking other options.
Well, because the, you know, with stimulus, I don't even know if, I haven't even looked at it this afternoon, but I imagine it probably did go through in one fashion or another about this stimulus thing. And they're talking about furloughed employees being paid, um, additional money or supplemental money, um, to offset what they, what they're getting paid versus what they would be. And supply to the unemployment, I guess, more than furlough. Um, is this, is the city requiring our furloughed employees to collect unemployment at this time? Or are we still paying them as if they're here, all of them?
We're paying them, we're paying full-time employees as if they're here. And we have a combination of, you know, people, we, we split shifts and directed to stay home so as not to infect each other. We have employees that are working, coming into work and working some hours. We have others that are remotely working in combination. So we have all kinds of variations going on. But if you're a full-time employee, you're getting paid.
Okay, so I mean, I understand that government is a little different from the public sector because tax dollars are paying their wages. Most tax dollars are not being decreased because of this necessarily. So I can kind of understand that. Um, uh, I guess my furloughed employees collecting unemployment. So, so do we have any employees that are off now that are not working? I mean, just staying at home, doing nothing? Or is everybody, is everybody kind of in that position where they're just working from a slight position? Do you have, do you have a count on how many you have that are not, uh, versus?
Yeah, we do, we do have employees that are home not working. Um, or the, the type of job that they have, there, it really doesn't work well. You know, to be able to, to work remotely or just not practical. Um, and things have, have really changed because once, you know, the twenty twenty dash twenty-one executive word came out, I mean, we really had to, to send home. Um, all, as an example, we, we still had, uh, Doyle and auditorium employees working. Um, and, and trying to do work and, uh, you know, other things that they could, um, they could, you know, get done during that time. But once that executive word came out, then we had to essentially close those facilities altogether. Now, some of those employees can do work and, and some can't. Um, and keep in mind, you know, with public works and utilities, uh, those employees we've sent home and, and none of them are really working remotely. I mean, they're ju, I mean, they're just home.
So will, will we receive, I guess, anything that they get paid? It's one hundred percent funded by the City of Sturgis because we use taxpayer money and nothing from this governmental supplement, correct?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Mullins, can you repeat that?
The, the people that are home not working or whatever, I, the government is talking about, the federal government is talking about supplementing pay for these employees that might have to claim unemployment, yada, yada. We are basically paying all of our employees, no matter full-time, part-time, whatever. We're not getting, we're not getting anything from the federal government stimulus. Is, is this what I'm hearing?
I don't know that we're not getting anything from the stim, stimulus. Um, I, I really couldn't answer that. I'm hopeful that we might, but I have no idea. I mean, I, I don't know that many people have had a chance to really review the details of that. Certainly, there's a lot of discussion about, you know, what kind of funding and how unemployment is going to work. And keep in mind, what we're proposing to do is give that a date of April thirteenth. Because as time goes on and if we get further, we might have to look at this differently, particularly if we have information about, you know, what the federal stimulus bill is going to do.
Okay. Now, I understand this is, this is an effort to kind of retain the, the ones that you have, right?
Exactly, especially part-time people. I mean, full-time people are home and they're getting paid. But our part-time people, um, when we are able to open the Doyle and auditorium back up and then we have, you know, quite a few, I mean, we're going to be approaching May here soon, which we're typically gearing up for seasonal workers. Um, we, we want, when we're going to open up, we want those employees to be there and ready. And my fear is that if they're not getting paid, even if they're filing, you know, well, if they're not getting paid, then they're going to go elsewhere.
Right. And you led into my final question. It was about the seasonal employees. It, they have not started yet. This does not apply to them then?
Yeah, no, it doesn't. I mean, if we have a seasonal employee currently working, it would. But this is the time of year that we really start gearing up. And I mean, it is, it is, uh, top on the agenda because we have people that say they're coming back, but they have to have a job to come back to. And again, this is the time of the year that we're starting gear up for spring and particularly in parks and cemetery, getting ready for, uh, Memorial Day. So.
Okay. Should we, should we not then in some way include returning seasonal workers in something in case this thing drags on?
Well, um.
Is that not that important?
No, it's important. I mean, the other thing to consider is that we can bring them back and hire them if they're working. So mostly the, the people that are being impacted now that we're looking to address are facilities that we can't open. We are able to, um, maintain parks and cemetery. So we can bring those people back.
That makes sense. All right. Uh, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Mullins. Uh, Commissioner Wiki waves his hand, and so could you unmute Commissioner Wiki? Commissioner Wiki, you have a question?
Yep, uh, Mike, the additional paid sick leave, is there an end date to that or will that be indefinite?
Right now, it's in, it's in, it's indefinite. And what, what that means is they, they would get up to eighty hours for something that's related to COVID. Um, I, without knowing, you know, the course of this, it's really challenging, I think, to come up with an end date. Um, I think it makes sense to me that as we see a light at the end of the tunnel, that we'd be able to do that. I just don't know what that would be right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, are there any, are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Burr is waving to me.
Yes, I've got a question for Mike also.
Commissioner Burr.
On the retroactive, um, pay for being ill, do you relate that to the COVID nineteen symptoms? But with the flu going around, how are we going to tell the difference?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can tell the difference because the symptoms are similar. Um, and as an example, if someone has a fever, um, I don't think we want to chance and bring them in. And there's not a great way to know. I think in some cases, you know, even if they're not doing, uh, COVID tests, they may be doing a flu test. But not everybody that has a fever ends up going to the doctor and getting even a flu test. That's why we tried to capture that in that March first date. Um, because in my opinion, that should more than enough, you know, create like a net for anybody that might have been sick, um, related to COVID. So, um, no, we're not going to be able to distinguish the difference. The best way I can think of to try to capture it is, is using that March first date. The best way I can think of to try to capture it is, is using that March first day.
So that's your question, Commissioner Burr.
Yes, thank you.
I, I think that's actually a pretty good point, and one of the dilemmas we're running into is that, you know, we have people that I think are being very responsible when they're symptomatic and they're staying home, you know, not to bring it to work. And it, you know, many of these people are not going to get the test. So we'll never really know whether they had it or not.
Okay. Um, again, any other questions or comments on this issue? If not, what, I will take a mo, a motion for this item. Please unmute yourself if you would like to make the motion.
Your Honor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission adopt the resolution regarding City of Sturgis' response actions to COVID nineteen as presented.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion by, okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Mullins and support by Commissioner Good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeVorek, Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all. Next thing, next item on our agenda is the automatic bill payment and rollee credit. Ken Rhodes, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as you can imagine, this has uh been a bit of a disruption uh for the, our office. Uh, we get, I would estimate about uh slightly less than a thousand people coming in every single week to uh pay their bills. And um it's uh, it's been different. A lot of people found out on Friday, although we tried to put that information out there that we're closed. A lot of people came up to our door on Friday realizing that we were closed. So um, the automatic bill payment program has been in, uh, in effect uh as long as I can remember. Um, and I think you're all familiar with those types of programs, where basically uh whatever your billed uh each month on the, your bill due date, uh, it's automatically withdrawn, withdrawn from your checking account. We've had great success uh with it. It's grown um all the time. Um, and we encourage people to do it. Uh, I would say we have about eleven hundred accounts uh with that set up right now, and it's a fabulous uh program because uh we can basically handle uh, you know, six hundred accounts with one fell swoop. So uh obviously, people are having to um determine how to pay uh right now. We have a lot of people that pay in cash. They can do that through the uh Dropbox. Obviously, you can pay online. You can certainly send us a check, a lot of different options. But if we got more people to uh pay through the automatic payment, again, it would make our, uh, their lives easier, our lives uh easier with, because obviously, we're not fully staffed at this point uh on any particular day. Um, so um, in order to do that, I want to encourage people to do that. And so I am recommending a ten dollar credit, sending out a letter to each uh utility uh account um and letting them know about this credit and this uh offer, and hopefully, we'll get some folks signing it up. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Holly can certainly provide information as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Rhodes? And again, I cannot see Mr. Mullins if he has a question. Seeing none, I will take a motion on this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd remind you just to open it up for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there, Andrew, is there anybody in the uh?
I don't see anybody yet. If there is, um.
Okay.
Please use the raise hand feature. I'll just give it just a quick second, Mr. Mayor. I don't see anyone. I think we're.
All right, thank you, Andrew.
Yep.
Again, I'm going to re-ask the question. Are there any cut questions from the commission for Mr. Rhodes on this item? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that the Sturgis City Commission approve the automatic bill payment enrollment credit as presented. Word.
I believe that was a second by Mr. Mullins.
Correct.
Roll call, please. I have a motion to approve in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeVorek, Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all. We are now to the commissioner and staff comments. Um. Again, not being able to see everybody that's here, um, Ken, would you, you have a comment? Ken Rhodes.
Uh, no, no comment. It's been interesting, but no comment tonight.
I'll agree. Thank you, sir. Um, Andrew, I'm trying to go around the room in, in my mind here. Andrew, you'd be probably the next one.
Sure. No, no further comment at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Um, is Holly still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. No comment.
Would you comment?
Be healthy. Stay healthy.
All right, thank you, Holly. Um, is our public safety director there? Is he still there, Andrew?
You, sorry, I had to unmute.
Welcome back, sir. Do you have a comment?
I don't have any comment at this time, unless there's questions specifically for me.
Any, any questions for uh our public safety director? Well, just keep hea, keep getting healthy then. Is Ryan on this also, Andrew?
Yes, I'm here.
Brian, do you have a comment?
I don't.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Will, are you still there?
I'm here. I have no comments.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Sir. All right, thank you. Um, how about our city attorney tonight? I think, I believe it's Eric.
That's Eric, yeah. Um, no, very interesting, but no, no comment. I'm curious what Jeff Smith's backdrop there though. Is that?
I wish I could see it.
Oh.
That's from one of the July fours at the airport. That's seven eighteen flying the flag in the background there, but I just figured I'd change it up from my living room so when my kids walk back and forth, nobody was laughing at them or half dressed or, you know, who knows?
That came from like, uh, like a Fox, a Fox News uh backdrop or something. I like it. I like it. That not.
Thank you. Uh, which leads, which leads us to our city manager, Michael. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments, Your Honor. Um, so as you would expect, our employees are, I think, fabulous. I mean, there's a lot of change and uncertainty going on when we're, and then the step or step up they're doing. Uh, I also want to thank Andrew for all of his work getting this together. Um, it was, there's a lot of parts and pieces to even meet the governor's executive order to allow this. Um, and Matt Q, our IT person, has been doing a ton of work, and, and I know that you've had to interact with him somewhat as well. So uh, I'm just really happy with where we're at and appreciative of, of staff. Um, and also, thank you for your support on the resolution. I think that's going to mean a lot to employees and, and the community with, you know, waiving shut-offs and waiving fees. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Commissioner Littman, do you have any comments tonight? Andrew, you may have to unmute Commissioner Littman.
Yes. He's muted.
Yeah, he's muted, Andrew.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it. I seem to be having a little trouble unmuting him, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Technical difficulties with Commissioner Littman.
You say he was a muted?
He's got a.
He's muted.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I can, I can do it from here, unfortunately.
Okay. We'll read his lips.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
All right.
You know.
Hey, a big shout out and a thank you to Andrew for making the house call to help me set up my computer laptop that I haven't used in about two years. And everything worked fine. Thank you very much. Uh, we've been a participant in that automatic debit for the utilities coming from the city since its inception, and I think it works great. That's something we can automatically write at the end of the, every month in the checkbook without writing a check, and I appreciate it, but it does work well. And uh, thanks to city staff, the way they've been uh going here, and that's all I got tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Littman. Uh, the next, uh, Commissioner Mullins, are you still there?
Yes, I am, Mayor Heil. Thank you. Probably, it's probably to your uh, in, to your best advantage that you couldn't see me all night. But anyway, um, just wanted to say, you know, thanks to the city staff for, for all you guys are doing. A fantastic job here in all the, to the COVID nineteen, you know, getting everything uh in order as quickly and efficiently as you guys have. Awesome. Andrew, thank you so much for putting stuff up. I know how taxing that was on you. And uh, and I'm so happy that we're taking care of our employees to make sure that they're, that they're all taken care of in this, in this time here, making them all struggle, and uh specifically the part timers to uh make sure that we, we can ensure that they're coming back. Um, comments though? Number one is Holly. Nice purple room. Um, Travis, nice Woody page uh backdrop there. I see your marker board back there. Great job. Uh, Jeff, I was going to say it with Eric, but he, he beat me to it. Great backdrop, man. Love it. And uh Holly, or excuse me, not Holly, Suzanne, did we wake you up?
No, but I'm coming where I am.
Oh, it looked like you were in bed. Nice hat, by the way.
Thank you.
Enjoy, y'all. Stay safe, stay safe. Stay safe and be well, all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Malone.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, first of all, I too would like to say thank you to Andrew Cook for all his hard work and to Matt for his hard work as well. The IT department did a fantastic job. Um, Mr. Littman, you didn't have to come back. You could have done this from Florida, although you may not have gotten the house call from Andrew. Um, I would like to also add that uh our local Sturgis Hospital, um, there is an issue there. Uh, keep, keep our hospital in your prayer, please. Um, I think they're going to need all the help they can get. Um, they don't have a critical care or response team. Uh, uh, so whoever may be stricken with this COVID nineteen might have a problem within our own community. I'm happy to also see so far, there have been no reported cases in St. Joseph County. However, the testing is, what, probably two weeks behind? So someone could have been tested a week or two weeks ago, and uh, this still doesn't know it. But uh, all of you, um, continue to practice uh safe um distances and uh thanks for all joining in on this uh virtual meeting. It's been virtually pleasant. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Uh, Commissioner Burr.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Wiki.
Just making sure to keep my distance. Other than that, I think I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Claire.
Of all the things, just wash your hands, guys. That's all. Support local.
Thank you. I thank you, sir. Um, the commit, I, I will agree. Again, big thumbs up to Andrew on this. Uh, fantastic job and with Matt too, to do, to pull, to be able to do this for ourselves and for the public, to be able to do this type of program for this. Um, I'll agree too with what Commissioner Good said, uh, continue to practice your public distancing. And Commissioner Klinger said the same thing that I would say, continue to wash your hands. Um, basically, it seems like the only thing you can do to keep uh doing that, and it's amazing to sit here and watch. You don't know how many times you touch your face. Uh, we're supposed to practice not doing that. Other than that, again, thanks to staff, and again, Andrew, again, thank you for it. I'm going to go ahead and close our meeting. We are closed. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Commissioner Good, did you have something more to say?
I was just going to ask the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Wanted to mention anything about his vice mayor.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Not that this meeting at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm well aware what's going on, and I, we, we need to do a little bit of time to, a, a couple of days before we do anything.
All right.
But, but we will be talking about it very, very soon.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, John.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Night.